I now call to order this September 11th, City Council Regular Meeting, and announce that we have a quorum, including Councilmember Steve Rocky dialing in from somewhere in Maine. So you can see him on his screen if he unmutes his videos. Hey Steve.
Bahabah.
Okay. Tonight's invocation be led by Reverend Howard Hune with Friendswood Methodist Church. If you're not standing already, it looks like you all are. Remain standing after the invocation, and we'll say the pledges.
Today, as we gather, we also remember the many lives that were lost on September 11th, 2001. And so before I offer the invocation, I want to invite everyone to join me in a moment of silence and reverence. Almighty and gracious God, we thank you for the many lives that were lost. We pray peace for the families that remain. We thank you that you continue to walk with them. Continue to walk with us as a nation. Watch over us, protect us, and guide us through your almighty hand. And now, Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide our councilmen and councilwomen as they meet and discuss matters with regard to our city. I pray they shall choose to do what is moral and rational. I pray that their motivation in everything they do will be for the good of the public and not for their own. I pray that they will be able to solve our city's problems, to make good policies that address them, help them to be competent and excellent in their governance. Almighty God, we trust in you with all our heart and lean not on our own understanding. We acknowledge you in all our ways and in all our meetings so that you will direct our paths. Father, we do not rely on ourselves for effective results, for we are only human and often make mistakes. It is you who knows all things. So Father, have your divine way in this meeting. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thanks, Howard. Item four, council comments and reports. I'll start off and just say thanks again to Howard, especially for bringing up and reminding us that this is the 22nd anniversary of the attacks of 9/11. I know we all have a personal story of someone that we knew or somewhere down the road. I had a classmate of mine at the Naval Academy who was unfortunately killed at the Pentagon on 9/11 during the attack. So I'm remembering my classmate Captain Jerry DiCanto today. And with that, I'll pass. Sally?
I just wanted to say, remembering also 9/11, that how our country came together after that disaster. That was such a tragic time in our history, but we all did come together. And I hope that we can remember that, that in times of need and adversity, we can come together. We've seen it right here in our own community during hurricanes and things like that. So I hope we'll set aside our differences and try to work harder together.
Councilmember Hank.
Thank you. And I would ditto that. Then on a more joyful note, this is Grandparents' Day in many school districts, and so I've had the pleasure today of participating in Grandparents' Day in Katy and Friendswood's having celebrations too of grandparents. And what a blessing it is to have the older generation around to help our younger ones navigate through life. And so with that being said, our schools are all back in session. And I would just encourage everyone to be mindful that our kids are traveling back and forth to school and all the stresses that our families have. And then this weekend, I learned that our food banks, even here in Friendswood, that are run by several of our churches, are being almost overwhelmed. And the church that I attend is a food bank, and it's Mary Queen, and they served almost 17,000 this past year. And so if you have a chance to, you know, stop and think about the many ways that we've been very fortunate, but realize that even within our community and surrounding areas, that's not always the case. And if you have some extra, you know, available cash and can contribute to our food banks, that would be great. And then lastly, our library is having a fundraiser gala on September 30th. It's Through the Looking Glass, and it's based on Alice in Wonderland. It will be phenomenal, a phenomenal night, September 30th. Come out. It's open to the public. You can get tickets online. It will go to help, this last year, funds that were raised by the Friends bought a van to do outreach for some of our seniors and others that can't get to the library. And now, we have a lot of people using it as a makerspace with the 3D printers and all, and they're saving up money to be able to have a room for that. So our library is alive and well and very well used. So September 30th.
Thank you. Councilmember Matranga, welcome back.
Well, thank you.
World traveler.
Although Steve Rocky is tying into this meeting from the furthest away, I think I traveled the farthest to get here. Last time I slept was in South Africa. So I'm glad to be here safely. So if I say anything, or I look tired, or say anything that doesn't quite make 100% sense, just give me some consideration for lack of sleep.
Try not to nap while I'm speaking, maybe while Sally's talking.
Well, these guys will kick me. So that was all I.
You're good. Mayor Protim, Rocky, you have any council member comments?
No, I'm enjoying Maine, though.
Excellent. Okay. Sitting in for our city secretary, Raquel, is here. Letty Brish is under the weather this afternoon, so thank you for stepping up, Raquel. Do we have any comment cards from the public?
No, sir. We do not.
All right. I'm going to skip over item five, public comment, then, and we'll move on to special recognitions. Present the City of Friendswood Five Star Spirit Award for the first quarter of 2023 to LT Thomas in the Public Works Department, and for the second quarter to Patty Anaya in the Police Department. So LT, Patty?
Yes.
Marad, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes. And if I can have both LT and Patty to come up here, I would appreciate it. I see LT's wearing the right hat despite our disappointing loss this last. Well, we're recognizing two employees this evening. We missed the first quarter of this current calendar year that we're in. LT is being recognized for his outstanding service. We continually get received compliments from the public every time he goes out and tries to address meter leaks and other problems that homeowners and commercial property owners experience from time to time. His professionalism and his courtesy are not lost on those customers. They made it a point to contact us multiple times at the start of this year to let us know the great job he's doing. And similarly, if I can say the word properly, Officer Patty Anaya, who's been with us a number of years, was recognized for helping a stranded motorist on the way to work on 2351. The individual that I think lost multiple tires, or at least two tires, was unable to navigate her way to work, but didn't have time to wait for a wrecker. And Patty assisted the individual, contacted the church nearby to house the vehicle there for a number of hours while they were able to get a wrecker. The resident was able to get to work, I believe through an Uber or some other means of transport, coworker, and came back later in the day with the assistance of Officer Anaya. So we want to recognize these two employees. We do routinely receive compliments for the work that our staff does, but these two have gone above and beyond both the first and second quarters of this calendar year, and we want to recognize them for that. So with that, these are our five-star award recipients for this calendar year. Would you all like to say a few words? Or at least introduce your family if they're here? Very welcome.
I'd only say it's been an honor to have you as a president of the community for seventeen years. And over seventeen years, I've worked under a great person, a great leader of the community.
Thank you.
This is Krista, the official picture taker.
Well, let's get some pictures taken.
LT.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Get a personal picture. Get this for posterity.
Nice. And then can I get one as well? And do you want to get in it with it?
Yeah, he sure does.
Chief said. All right.
He's a deputy.
Three, two, one. All right. And then LT, if I could get your picture as well. Three, two.
You don't want to reach your phone, do you?
Thanks, Marad.
Thank you.
Item seven, committees or special reports. 7A, receive the delinquent accounts collection report from Purdue, Brandon, Fielder, Collins, and Mott LLP. I think they are not present. Is that correct?
That is correct.
We have the report in our materials.
You do have the report in the backup material. I did receive a couple of questions from Councilmember Matranga that I will get him the answers to, but the material's there. If you all have any other questions, welcome to answer it.
You'll copy all of it?
Yes, ma'am.
For the most part, we're very successful in collecting our... First off, we have residents that pay their taxes, for the most part.
Correct. So...
And then we have a great...
Delinquent tax attorney.
Delinquent tax attorney that is very successful in collecting taxes for us. So...
Yes, sir.
Moose Rocco, help the judge find his checkbook. So... Yeah, Guido. All right. Moving on to item 7B, receive the Community and Economic Development Committee annual report. And I believe this report is also in the backup. I saw it.
Correct. They've had a fantastic year discussing strategies for the next calendar year and the work they've done this past year on identifying opportunities to help local businesses. They've met with a number of folks, and they couldn't be here this evening, but their material's in the backup.
They're doing great work under the leadership of Stephen Ray and Aubrey Harbin. Thank you all as staff liaison to that committee for guiding them and getting them to do some great stuff.
And our two council liaisons, Councilmember Branson and Councilmember Aaron Martin.
Well, thank you to you also.
And Chair Susan Hazamica is still doing a lovely job as well.
Yes.
All right. Item 7C, receive the Friendswood Downtown Economic Development Corporation annual report. And I think we have Vice Chair Elmer Bubba Johnson. Bubba?
Yes, sir.
Keep it short.
Keep it short.
Just hit the highlights. No, you do what you need to do.
Just real quick, thank you for having us here, having me here. Dr. Hilleberg sends her apology she couldn't make it. But we have, as you know, been the same seven board member, board of directors since 2016.
And we have, since the last time we met, made significant progress on our Texas Department of Transportation sidewalk curb ramps and mast arm projects. If you've driven up and down 518, you see it looks really, really good. The sidewalk is almost almost complete. I just drove it. There's just a few little sections, mainly right here at Castlewood, and a couple more that aren't complete. On sidewalks, the mast arms and traffic signals are all up. They're operating. The pedestrian crossing areas are mostly working. TechStop still has a little bit of wiring, but a little bit. The downtown lighting project continues. We'll get to the part right here. The downtown lighting project continues with electrical services in the cabinets already in place. We're just waiting on the set of forms for the foundations for the poles. That should start in the next couple of weeks, and delivery of the poles and the ramps should be the end. So we will show some progress there. Let's go to... Since we started, we've had numerous projects, overhead lines up and down both sides of 518, mainly on the west side. East side lines to take down approved would be a little bit of a problem with legacy buildings, right of ways, eastwards, where you would have to go around the backside of the building and just load it. But most of the lines on the west side of 518 have been removed. In all fairness, a lot of those were abandoned in place. They weren't being used for anything. So we got those down and could have majority of the rest of them. So. Lauren Griffin Associates Downtown Improvement Plan. This is our title. This is what, this is our plan for the next several years. And that led, that particular improvement plan led to the, let's get one before we go down to the partnership of TechStop. Partnership of TechStop for the curb track sidewalks and traffic signals project is moved in with understatement. That was a sizable grant, like 15 million. And when asked after receiving that grant, what promoted you to choose Friendswood for that? And I said it was the downtown improvement. It's professionally done. You guys had your arms around the things that need to be done. And it said, the TechStop said that they wanted to be a part of it. That little investment in development plan of Lori Griffin led to this grant, returning the best at large. And then the implementation upcoming for the downtown improvement elimination plan, consistent and energy efficient LED lighting from 2351 to Castlewood. Like I said, we'll have the forms going up this month. The lights will be developed at the end of the month. So the next couple of months, you see some progress there. The second part of the plan will go from Castlewood to Whispering Pines, and now we go over there. How do I dance? There you go. This eye chart is a map on the left, just 2351, the right Whispering Pines. If your eyes are better than mine, you may be able to see some curves and crosswalks where the traffic signal project where all those were in place. Next. Show or tell, it's only two, mayor. I'll get through them quick. Whispering Pines and South Friendswood Drive. This is a before, and you can see the cables going across the intersection, the lights hanging from the cable. Listen, I've lived here for 50 years. I've been through a lot of hurricanes. Driving into those things and the winds whipping, I was like, is this thing going to fall on me or what? I mean, it's not only unsightly, I feel like it's going to be a little bit dangerous. So go to the next one. Hey, look at there. No cables, no power lines going up there. These beautiful mast arms, if you haven't stopped and looked at them, take a look at them. They're really nice. And no more unsightly wires. Castlewood and Friendswood Drive, right here beside us, same thing. Cables going everywhere, ice dangling in the breeze. Next. As I said, we couldn't get rid of all of the lines going across, but we got rid of most of them, and then the new arms and then mast arms.
Bubba, the second half of the illumination lighting from Castlewood to Whispering Pines, is that due to funding? It's just we're going to wait on more money as it comes?
We didn't want a grant.
Okay.
So we're going to wait till we go over there.
Got you.
We didn't have a grant for that part of the project.
Okay.
Any questions?
Bill, Bubba, great job. And thank you for reminding us that that investment we made with Lauren Griffith and Associates back in about 2017, 16, 17, paid off in spades when we were able to get this grant. And we've used that same strategy in other places. You know, we have a plan on the shelf for next door here, you know, when funds are available, and when a grant becomes available, we can roll out that beautiful plan we have for the vacant lot next door and maybe win another grant that way. And so, yeah.
They work for us.
It's worked other places. Marad could tell us, you know, where other, we've won other grants. But thank you for reminding us of that because that is awesome. And I know Richard Sassen is beaming right there because he was one of the stalwarts way back in, what was it, OT 2 or something, started getting the lines down, you know, and the decrepit poles out of the downtown district. And, you know, this program, this project just continues what you started. So good work all around.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Thanks for serving since 2017. Man, you got, you didn't have gray hair back. Looks good on you. All right. Item eight, work session topic. I see Hill coming up. Receive and discuss an update regarding capital improvement projects. Over to you, Hill.
Good evening. I'm not Samantha Hertzels. I'm Hill Arias. I'm the Director of Engineering. Here to present to you the capital improvement project quarterly update. If you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt me at any time. Hey, first update is on our fire station. Number two, the reconstruction. We are finally starting to see the end of the light, the light at the end of the tunnel on this project. We are expecting substantial completion here within the next month or so. If you drive by, for the most part, you see it complete on the outside. All the work that's going on right now is on the inside. There's some interior finishing going on, some utility work underground going on. And we're pretty close to getting that wrapped up here in a couple of weeks. Next is the Blackhawk Facility renovation and shelter. Here recently, first phase of the project was the construction of offices for staff that were housed in that facility. We have moved into the new area, and it's been great to be over there. The next phase that was going on was the construction of the shop area. It was ongoing, and I'm happy to say that we had our substantial completion on that portion of the project last week. And so we had some public works guys getting after it today, getting moved over to that portion of the building, and they'll be making use of that portion. The shop area, if you're looking at this photo right here, is on the left side of the building. On the back side, that will be Phase 3. That's going to be construction of locker rooms and other odds and ends on that project. And then later on tonight, we're going to have a more of a bit for the construction of the shelter portion. And that's going to be where the whole offices were at on the right side of the building. And I felt to mention this on the previous slide, on the bottom of each slide, you'll see moving forward the amount of the project, how much it's spent, and what the source of those funds are. For those online, that might be watching, GO means general obligation bonds. WS means water steward, working capital water steward bonds, and GF means general. Next is Phase 2B of the Blackhawk Boulevard construction. That's ongoing right now. We've got a lot of underwork going, underground work going right now. That includes the installation of a 12-inch water line and some stormwater. The residents that live on the southwest side of the street have, are going full bore at it right now with their driveways having been ripped out last week. But that is moving forward.
Move a 12-inch water line?
12-inch water line. Next is an update on Phase 2C. That's going to complete the rest of Blackhawk Boulevard. We're working through, this is going with our project engineer, and here recently, one of, was not only that engineer, but a, our engineer for construction of water system improvements. We realized that there was a opportunity for some improvement or some savings if we think ahead and do some combining of the projects here. So we're looking at including, so that we're not disrupting the lives of residents that live along that street twice, including the construction of a 24-inch water line that will run from Blackhawk to Daletown. And we've also got a little bit more intercoordination going with some additional work that will happen on the south side of Blackhawk. Have some 5.8. TechStop has asked for some additional, and additionally, should be installed there. It's a turn lap, and we feel like this is a good time to take advantage of this and get that done.
Hey, before you go, so after the completion of Phase 2C, how much will be left of Blackhawk to be redone?
When we're done with Phase 2C, we will be 100% of Blackhawk.
I think it's important to point out, you know, Harris County Precinct 2 logo up there, that we probably couldn't have gotten this done this soon without the help of our Commissioner Adrian Garcia from Harris County. So we need to mention that.
Absolutely. They've been a really great partner with us, and Commissioner Garcia's staff has been great working with city staff as well, and they've been very helpful in this entire process.
The step up of the 24-inch water line, is that the water line that's also going to come by, 2351 and crosswalks?
Yes.
So you're stepping up that?
We're stepping up that line. And it, there's a general map here later on, which I'll show. But that just...
That makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah. It'll be stepping up the size of the water line to improve the finishing and operation of our water system, that's the whole. Speaking of improving our water systems, tank rehab project is ongoing right now. Currently, there is a ground stored tank on So much that is being completed. Guys were out there yesterday, all day yesterday, disinfecting that tank, and they're in the process of getting that back online hopefully this week. If everything goes well, we'll build that back up this week. And then the next tank that they'll be working on is the elevator storage tank at, over beside the camel structure. If you drive by there, you can tell that it's in bad need of a new paint job. So we'll be seeing that happen. That should take a couple of months, and then it'll be a great sight point for when you're driving into town, the Alvin side of town.
Is that just exterior or inside is all?
This will be both interior and exterior work. There'll be some structural work that needs to be done on the inside, and the interior gets sandlaced and will be redecorated as well.
Great.
And I did want to say, very thankful for our contractor to be so willing to work with us. We've all seen what the summer's done. It's been really hot, and demand has been really high on water. And they've been very helpful in working with us in making sure that the work that they did was not going to affect the city's ability to provide water to the citizens. So we're coming up that summer peak now, and we've got a couple more tanks that are going to be done here in the next couple of months. Thankfully, they've been so helpful to us to help compensate that. So there's the map I was referencing right now. That's not the exact line alignment. We've looked at... We've looked at several different alignments. One of them, or three of them, the possibilities took it down Blackhawk and we have chosen a alignment that if you take this line here, if you shift it to the south a little bit, it'll view it more true representation of where it's going to be. We're still making sure that we can obtain all the easements and right away that will be needed for that. But we should have that prepped up and the engineering well underway so that we can have that engineering done and ready to go out for bid in the early part of next year. To elaborate on, or to expand on what we're talking about on the upsizing that water line, this is all a part of our ongoing TIP. And this is to provide additional capacity, part of the reason why we're doing this, to provide additional capacity to other parts of the city, like the south side of the city, to help improve water flow in existing subdivisions like Sun Noodles subdivision. And then that's a growing part of the city. We've got Friendswood Drive that's fixed to come online and we've got Port County that's coming also. So, we're going to be hopefully ahead of that and it won't affect us too greatly in the future with it coming online. Next is an update on our surface water plant, number one, tank replacement. If you look at the picture right there, the tank on the right, that's one of the tanks that is in rehab in the next couple of months. The tank on the left needs to be replaced. Its structural condition was not in a state where it would be economical to rehab that. So, it'll be replaced. Not only will it be replaced, we'll be upsizing it from 500,000 ounces to 750,000 ounces. And it'll be, a new tank will be placed right there in that grassy area on the right side of there. Then we'll be making use of the slab that will be left behind to place some equipment that needs to be placed in that area, including a generator that needs to be built here. So, all this talk about the capacity and growth and that brings us to our impact fee assessment study that we have ongoing. We had a brief technicals here last month, did a presentation, they'll be back here in the next couple of months to present to you guys the, a maximum impact fee assessment based on the study on our current capital needs. And they will present that to you guys so that you can make a decision going forward on what our impact fee needs to be. Then finally, I wanted to circle back on, this has been an ongoing effort here, the unified planning work program. This is something that we've been working with the Harris Galveston Area Council for two years now. About two years ago, we, the city was awarded a grant, two grants, one for a planning study for Friendswood Parkway and the other one for a master control plan. It's been a little while now, but we, and we had a bit of a slowdown there with the different things that happened. But HGAC recently let us know that they have signed a advanced funding agreement with TechStop and on one of the projects and they're finalizing the other one with TechStop for the master control plan. That's it. I'm going to turn it over to Bo real quick. He's going to elaborate on this a little bit more.
You may recall, we presented this item to council close to two years ago. The delay was due in large part to HGAC staffing. They were short 15 planners in their long-range planning division and they were unable to move this project forward, not just these projects, but everything in their UPWP for the past two years. So, we're grateful to see it moving forward. There are competing routes associated with this and no pun intended, this advanced funding agreement is intended to determine the alignment of Friendswood Parkway from 528 towards Pearland Parkway. But we do, as you know, have developers that are looking at sections of property that the alignment will ultimately go through. So, there you have the chicken and egg syndrome. What comes first? The developer has the opportunity to develop the property as they see fit, based upon the public road network. We will be working with them to sort of make sure that things develop in a cohesive manner. Hence why we asked for funding for the traffic improvement, traffic impact analysis that was included in the FY24 budget. That's not just for Friendswood Parkway, it's for the existing Friendswood Parkway as well at West Boulevard. It's also for Castlewood and Greenbrier intersection near the high school and it's also for the extension of Friendswood Parkway. All these different aspects of the project are being looked at at the same time by different agencies. If we were to wait on one agency as opposed to the other, we run the risk of missing opportunities to get this project funded sooner as opposed to later. Ultimately, when HGAC looks at this project in totality, whatever's left to be built is what they're looking to build. And ultimately, that will determine what is, how our benefit cost analysis is calculated. Now, that being said, we are going to make sure that no efforts are lost. So, any coordination that takes place with HGAC and TechStop, we will look to bring on similar, the same firm if possible to look at the alignment study is to look at the traffic impact analysis so that they're able to pull from the same data and same resources as they evaluate the options and give us the best available data.
One thing I'd like to add there is there will be an opportunity for public input. There will be public beings and the feedback from the public will be heard on both projects. So, that is everything I have for you tonight. If you have any questions.
You would expect the one that's been approved, the funding that's been approved, advanced funding agreement, that that's 2024?
Yes, that's part of our 2024 UPWP and they'll be releasing an RFP for that for a engineering firm to do that planning study here in the next couple of months.
Thanks, Hill.
All right. Tax rate for fiscal year 2023-2024? It is now 6:12 PM. And I call to order this public hearing regarding the City of Friendswood proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2023-2024. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of giving all interested persons the right to express their views regarding the City of Friendswood proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2324. Everyone desiring to be a part of this hearing should have signed the list in the foyer. Each participant shall give his or her name and address in order to provide the proper record of this hearing. Rules allow for each person five minutes to present information. However, I encourage everyone to be as brief and to the point as possible. I would now like to request that staff summarize the subject of this public hearing.
So, Mayor and Council, this is a continuation of the budget discussion that we've had since the start of summer, early June. As you heard, on August 28th, when the FY24 budget was adopted, the proposed tax rate is point zero, sorry, point 5007, lower than what was advertised in the newspaper and what was advertised on our website. Staff is ready to answer any questions you have specific to the budget. The tax rate will fund roughly $25 million worth of revenue that will fund both operations and maintenance as well as the interest and sinking fund or debt service for previously voter-approved GO bonds.
And Mayor, before we continue on, can we ask Mayor Pro Tim Rocky to go ahead and turn on his video so we can see him as well?
Did you see your smiling face, Mayor Pro Tim? Make sure you're nice. There you go.
Can you see me?
We can see you, yes.
Okay.
Everybody can see you. Very good. Modern technology. You can use your microphone. Sounds like you're at a petting zoo.
Are there some people playing cards behind me?
Oh, I got it. Okay, well, tell them to keep it down.
We're conducting business here.
I want to send Brian Mansfield to Maine to make sure that people are, all right. I don't have any cards. I don't have any people signed up. Do I, Raquel? All right. There being no one desiring to speak on this item, I now close this public hearing regarding City of Friendswood proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2324. We now move on to item 9B. 9B, consider ratifying the property tax revenue reflected in the City of Friendswood's budget for fiscal year 2324, adopted on August 28th, 2023.
I move to ratify the property tax increase resulting in property tax revenue of approximately $25,153,251 for tax year 2023, reflected in the budget for fiscal year 2023-2024, as required by Local Government Code, Section 102 dot 007C.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Grifon, a second by Councilmember Hanks approving item 9B. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Seven to nothing. I see Councilmember Rocky's hand. Item 9C, consider an ordinance for the first and final reading adopting and levying the ad valorem tax rate for maintenance and operation expenditures for the City of Friendswood's fiscal year commencing October 1, 2023 and ending September 30, 2024, and adopting and levying the ad valorem tax rate for debt service for the City of Friendswood's fiscal year commencing October 1, 2023 and ending September 30, 2024. Let me, let me make this reminder, Sally. I want to remind the council that this item requires that 60% or at least five of the seven members of city council vote in the affirmative in order to adopt the proposed tax rate. So, do I have a motion on this item? Councilmember Branson?
I move that the City of Friendswood's property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.500728, which is effectively an 8.1% increase in the tax rate. The proposed tax rate is composed of a maintenance and operations rate of 0.379451 and an interest in sinking or debt service rate of 0.121278.
I second the motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Branson, a second by Councilmember Grifon. Before I call for the vote, I would like to make the statement that she read that this is an 8.1% tax rate increase. It's a little bit of a misleading because the state requires us to compare our tax rate for this year to our no new revenue tax rate, which last year, our tax rate was 48-something cents. This year, it's 50 cents. Basically, a 2.7% increase over our tax rate. So, if you're talking about a tax increase over last year, it's a 2.7. It's not 8.1, which I understand why the state wants us to be very transparent in how we do taxes and I get it, but it's a little bit misleading and I'm sorry you had to read that official language, Sally, to say 8.1%. It's not really. It's 2.7% higher than we had last year. And thankfully, because we started with something that was going to be in the neighborhood of 8%, didn't we, General? And because of our conservative-thinking budget staff, they hammered these numbers and got better data and used a sharper pencil and got us down to where we only had to raise our tax rate 1.2 cent? 1.3 cents?
1.3 cents.
Which I think is phenomenal. And we, this is the second lowest tax rate we've ever had in the city, 50 cents. So, very proud of Rhonda. General, who else is here from your, your great staff? Anybody else here, Rhonda? They all left? All right. They left it in our capable hands. I get it. Okay. Having said that, and reminding everybody, we need five votes to pass this. All in favor? Seven-nothing. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Motion passes. All right. Item 10, zone classification to change the underlying zoning from planned unit development to office park. 10A, I now call to order this public hearing regarding a request for a zone classification change located at 209 East Edgewood Drive, .2983 acres out of Lot 2 in Block 1 of Final Replat of Melody Plaza, Section 2 of subdivision in Galveston County, Texas. According to the map or plat thereof, recorded in Volume 18, Page 1136, in the office of the county clerk of Galveston County, Texas, to change the underlying zoning from planned unit development, PUD, to office park district, OPD. Who is that?
Where's me? Down on the other end.
Down on the other end?
On the other end.
Down at a different city hall. Okay.
Webster.
Keeping the specific use permit, Ordinance 98-5, that allows the use of the property as a print shop. I would now like to request that staff summarize the subject of this public hearing. Aubrey, how are you?
How are you? Oh, good. So, this is a change request to change the underlying zoning on a small piece of property from planned unit development to office park district. These subject property was actually, the zoning of the property was changed from OPD to PBD in 1997 and the SUP was added for the print shop in 1998. Up until December 2011, PUD uses were defined in the permanent use table. Basically, every use that was allowed in the PUD required an SUP. In December 2011, we made changes to the PUD portion of the zoning, the permanent use table and removed that because the purpose of the PUD is to tell us, you have an applicant or a property owner to tell us what creative use was in place of the PUD. So, we don't want to define those. So, we made that change and unfortunately, that was an unintended consequence for this particular property. So, changing the underlying zoning back to office park district will allow some additional compatible uses in the office complex. Planning zoning had their public hearing on August 10th. We did have one property owner that expressed opposition to the request citing concerns with the amount of parking on the site. The request is in line with the Future Land Use Act, which identifies this property as office. And at the planning and zoning commission meeting held August 10th, following the public hearing, the commission voted Order 1 in favor of the motion. Commissioner rides opposed and commissioners made an indifferent reaction.
Aubrey, what are they doing at the office park? It's a print shop, top training, right?
Yes.
And now?
It was.
It was top training, I'm sorry. So, now someone has bought the property and they want to make it office park. So, they don't? They're changing it from a pub to office park district?
Yes. Just to, so the print shop is going to remain.
Oh, it is?
Yes. But they have a second floor in the building that they might want to lease out to like an architect or an accountant.
How many square feet is that? 1,700, right?
1,500 upstairs.
1,500 upstairs? How many square feet downstairs?
2,600, 2,700. What, the garage?
Well, maybe I might ought to ask Brian Mansfield this. Brian, does that adding 1,500 square feet to an existing 2,600 feet change the parking requirements for that building? Or does it make it have to have a sprinkler system?
It would depend on the occupant load of the building. The square footage alone is one aspect of it, but as you know, different commercial uses have different per square foot requirements.
And we're having situations across the city where they may have 38 parking spaces, but they actually need 50. They may have 1,000 extra square feet and they're going to have to water sprinkler. I just want to know if this has been reviewed in that regard so that we're treating this owner the same way we're treating people out maybe at Zaddo's or Jaddo's or even out maybe in Advanced Park out on 2351? Are we treating them the same way? Because when you add 1,500 square feet, I think that changes the footprint of the commercial property, correct?
So, in the short order, yes, when this property is developed with a side plan of triple, are they simply going to have an application to build out the 1,500 or 1,700 square foot? They're going to have to make applications just like Jaddo's did, just like Diversity Advanced did at Industry Park.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I want to know. I just want to make sure that they're treated the same way as some of our other developers treat them. Okay. And how many parking spaces do they have right now? Okay, and how many parking spaces do they have right now for the printing shop?
So unfortunately, they're sharing all these spaces with the neighboring property, or the, when this property was subdivided and sold, it was going to be a plat. So the property owner that sold it to Top Printing sold parts of parking spaces.
So they got a share agreement?
They have, they were supposed to have a share agreement, they didn't do that. They didn't do anything in terms of lining up that publicity of Friendswood with regard to that.
Is this correct, Aubrey? He has six, current owner has six spots dedicated 100% on their property, and then half of nine others.
Yeah.
What council's looking at this evening was the public hearings focused on the appropriateness of the use of this particular property.
Would fall under the appropriate use as, as what planning and zoning? Why did Marcus rise opposed it? Do we know, or just, no, just no reason given?
He didn't vocalize his vote. He voted against it, but he didn't specify.
Smart man. Okay.
All right. Sorry, go ahead. I just wanted to make sure that's a good point you brought up, Robert. But if, if the current owner of the property wanted to do printing upstairs with, with people, it would be okay to do that right now as it stands. So whether, we're just talking about the function of the people, that they were, they wanted to expand their printing and had printing people up there, they would do it right now with, with no reviews or approvals?
Yeah, yes, the uses of, the print shop uses.
It's just the use, we're talking about the uses, potential uses, not whether there's people up there or not are being utilized.
Yeah.
And when that changes, I mean, when they put in their plan to do the expansion upstairs, that's going to come forth again, right? So this is all under the code?
For any outside changes with the commission, if it's just an interior build out, it will just go through the building department.
And the fire marshal will then express whatever concerns he may have as far as sprinkler systems and that sort of. All right, I'm good with it.
Okay, does the applicant have any comments, Robert? Your time to show. Back in speech class.
So I'm Robert Smith-Hart. My wife and I started Unitman Press in Friendswood back in 2000, 2005, sorry, in the HD Shopping Center. We started with 1,050 square feet, and we kept growing and adding, thanks to the house, we ran out of space, a lot, we couldn't get this long. During Hurricane Harvey, top printing owned by Greg, so we flooded. He came to work for me for a while, and he asked me if I was interested in this building. So in 2019, we bought the building, always with the intent of leasing out the upstairs as office space to make the numbers work. We went from 1,050, it's almost triple that just downstairs. Shortly after we moved in, we were informed that we needed to submit a zone change request, and I'm just now getting to that. We like being in Friendswood and are active in the community, so supporting schools, PTOs, booster clubs, Chamber of Commerce and so forth. And he felt this competition, benchmarking space has been good for Friendswood, based on some of our customers' feedback. If the council approves our request, we believe that being offered office space would help another small business, the need of extending their footprint, provide friends to get another business partner. I like Friendswood and they have developed some great friendships and businesses here. As a businessman, I've got to make the numbers work, and with limited street visibility, we've been told very hard to park. It's been difficult to grow the business in the current. I'm hoping that the additional income from leased office space is a win for us in the state.
Robert, do you have any idea what that space would be renting for upstairs? If you were, you're just saying office space, maybe an architect or maybe something in that area?
If somebody with a limited footprint, they don't, they need space in your Friendswood address, they don't get all parking spots.
Okay, thank you, Robert.
Hand me one more question. How many, how many people do you have working right now?
I have two full-time right now, I have three on part-time, and then typically I'm using three or four parking spots at one. Thank you, sir.
So I think we have no one signed up to speak. So I now close this public hearing and move on to item 10B. Consider approving an ordinance regarding a proposed zone change located at 209 East Edgewood Drive, and as previously described, to change the underlying zoning from planned unit development, ordinance 97-22, to office park district, and keeping the specific use permit, ordinance 98-5, that allowed the use of a print shop.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gruffon, a second by Councilmember Branson. Any more questions, comments? All in favor? I see seven hands. Correct? I have to watch the TV, so. Motion passes, seven, nothing. Yes, he had his hand up. All right, moving on to item 11, City Manager's Report. City Manager Murad Kabiri.
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Best city manager in Texas.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Don't let that get out, though.
No, you don't want that out. It'll be like my second item I report here in a second, and you'll understand why. First item, I'd like to recognize Linda Neustead in our city secretary's office. Linda's pursuing her certification in the Texas Municipal Clerks Association. Unlike most folks that are pursuing that certification, she's got a scholarship for the last three consecutive terms. She's being recognized at their state banquet here in October for that. We appreciate her continuing her professional development, but also appreciate her good stewardship of our finances and getting scholarships to pay for it. So thank you, Linda.
Linda, stand up. Are you standing? Yay, Linda, great job.
And going back to my earlier joke, we were recognized, potentially recognized here in the last week and a half, two weeks, as the cleanest neighborhood in the country. Though the recognition's not lost on me, I believe Friendswood is exceptionally clean. I think we have a fantastic city, wonderful parks, great public rights away. The information was a HouseFresh analysis that evaluated complaints through the 311 system in most metropolitan communities. As you know, Friendswood is a suburb of Houston, we do not have a 311 system, so I cannot attest to the validity of the numbers. But much like anything else, I like to grab a hold of good PR whenever we can, and I believe that Friendswood is clean and do, in large, large part, to keep Friendswood beautiful, due to our public work staff and our park staff and our code enforcement folks that work tirelessly to address concerns as they arise, and do appreciate the, the recognition, whether or not it's true, we, we believe that we are a clean city. We're a lot cleaner than Baltimore.
I believe it. Objectively, I think we are one of the cleanest cities in the country, so.
Yes.
I'm going to take it and run with it.
Thank you.
All right. Item 12, Business Items, Consider Authorizing a Memorandum of Renewal of the Emergency Medical Services Agreement with the Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department for the second one-year extension term.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Branson, a second by Councilmember Gruffon. Any questions? Any? Brian Marshall, Brian Mansfield, our fire marshal, who watches over this contract, is sneaking forward. All right, all in favor? Seven, nothing. Thank you, Brian. 12B, Consider Awarding a Construction Contract to Construction Masters of Texas, Inc., for the Blackhawk Emergency Shelter Project, bid number 2023-13. I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Motranga and Councilmember Aaron Wirt. Any questions for Hill on this contract? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Thank you, Steve. 12C, Consider Awarding a Vending Machine Services Contract to Gulf Coastal Vending Services, RFP 2023-15. Councilmember Aaron Wirt.
Second.
Councilmember Hanks. I don't even think we had a lot of vending machines, but I guess the ones we have, were they all at Public Works, or?
We, we have one at each public facility, City Hall, Public Safety Building, Public Works Facility, the library. We are looking to get some at the Activity Building and Stevenson Park as well, and a number of them, the city will get some percentage of the, the money that's earned on the, the vending machine.
Sounds like we need a contract. All in favor? Seven, nothing. Items 13, Proposed Resolutions and Ordinances, 13A, Consider on First Reading an Ordinance Amending the Friendswood City Code by Adopting a New Appendix A Signs, which Updates the Current Sign Regulations, Including Amendments Clarifying Definitions, Making Administrative Changes, Incorporating the Visibility Triangle Drawing, Expanding the Prohibition of LED Window Lights to All Zoning Districts, Updating the Political Signs Section in accordance with the Texas Election Code, Allowing Additional Signage on Fuel Canopies, and Making Other Amendments.
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilmember Branson and Councilmember Aaron Wirt. Any questions? Aubrey, you got to talk to us.
I have a question. I have a question.
Mayor Pro Tem.
If we approve this, when does it go into effect?
Yeah, LED. It goes into effect immediately, but you'll have 120 days in order to come to compliance.
Aubrey?
Are, are you done, Steve?
Yes.
Okay, Aubrey, we're not going to go restrictive on LED to get rid of like open and closed LED lights on.
No.
Okay, just kind of go, what, we're just like we've seen before, blue lighting around doors and.
Yeah, 2019, we enacted it in the downtown district. I think there was only one that was existing, and the business went out of business. So apparently, they don't really count.
How will they be notified of the change? Will y'all call them, or how does it, how will they know, like if they're in violation of this?
We could, we could send courtesy notices just to let them know that the order has been changed, identify them, and the shops are darker here, so they'll be more visible. But we'll send them the courtesy, we're not going to go write or write tickets right off that, so.
120 days.
Any other questions? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Consider on First Reading an Ordinance Approving Amendments to Chapter 34 of Floods to Incorporate Items from the Model Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance as published by the Texas Water Development Board and National Flood Insurance Program, Ordinance Guidelines, including clarifying and adding definitions, administrative changes, adding a severability clause, and a penalty section. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Gruffon, Councilmember Aaron Wirt. Any questions for our building official, Brian Ruin? Good to see you in a meeting. Man, special day.
Come on, you got to ask him some question.
You should ask him, yeah. Where do you get your haircut?
Not the same place I do.
What's our, what's our current rating?
Our current rating on the, the community's rating system is a six. And by doing this, we're, we're making an attempt this year to increase to a five, go back to a five, we were a five two cycles ago, so this is an attempt to try and, yes, get to that point where we can increase our discount for constituency.
So, so the residents of Friendswood would benefit from a lower number?
Absolutely, and a lot of this, this stuff we currently enforce, it just hasn't been incorporated in the ordinance. This gives me a little more opportunity to, I guess, enforce some of the things, or gives me backing for what I'm enforcing currently.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
And Brian, we're all Atlas 14 in Friendswood, right?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, discussion ended. Item 13C, Consider an Ordinance Amending the City's General Budget for Fiscal Year 2022, 23 by Approving Budget Amendment 11, and Providing for Supplemental Appropriation and/or Transfer of Certain Funds. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Hanks, Councilmember Branson, all in favor? Seven, nothing. Consent Agenda, let me read something here. Please note that there was a glitch in the agenda program software which occurred when the agenda was posted that resulted in item 14C being duplicated. What was previously numbered 14D will be brought back to us for consideration at our next meeting. Therefore, I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items 14A through 14F, with the exception of item 14D.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Councilmember Branson, a second by Councilmember Hanks. All in favor? All right, adjournment? Motion to adjourn? Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Thanks for tuning in, Steve.